The next item is the administrator's report.
A couple of quick updates. Community Development Director Steve Schnell has been asked to serve on the Michigan Works, Workforce Development Board. So that doesn't have to be appointed by the board, but just for your information, he will be assigned to that unless there was problems with the board. A couple other issues. One, our easement with Glenn's has expired. So we'll be bringing forth some paperwork here shortly for temporary extension. In the summer, we'll need the engineer to take a look at the drive. We'll need to make some recommendations on improvement to that drive and then reestablish a long-term easement with Glenn's to utilize that. So it's just on the north side of the property here, which most people use to access Glenn or their deliveries come in from that area. And then we've had a few questions concerning fairground ownership property. Ryan, civil counsel will be at the next meeting to give the details of that. But if you have any general questions right now, I can answer those, too.
Any questions for the administrator at this time? Okay. Brings us down to old business. There is none new business. And first item, it's an action item. We do have two time sensitive, or some time-sensitive issues today. And the first is the Stone Garden Grant. Stone Garden Grant. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, it is time-sensitive because the state and its infinite wisdom usually sends these out and tells us we have 30 days to do it. But back in September of 2012, the board approved the submission of the State of Michigan FY 2011 Operation Stone Garden Grant. And that grant was then submitted and approved for equipment in a total of 42,764. And they just now got it back to us with the approval to start buying the equipment that we had requested at the time. So this is the first round of that, if you will. And one of the pieces of equipment that we had submitted for was the night vision spotlights. They are an infrared spotlight that replace the old spotlights, you know, the 10,000 camp power spotlights or whatever. These are infrared so that at night, if you have someone that is missing or someone that doesn't want to be found, it's actually an infrared device that you can see the heat signature of those individuals. And so, not only for the apprehension of criminals, but also in the search and rescue of individuals, be it people or children or whatever. But these, we went out on bid for these, and as you can see in your packet, the recommendation is to go with the Curif Night Vision. It is the low bid of the three totaling $15,129. And that is my recommendation that the board approve the purchase of these in this first round of equipment purchases out of that grant. There is no financial impact on the county, other than the approval of the state grant monies expenditure.
There is no matching amount required for this.
That is correct.
And the reason we get this, the Stone Garden, Operation Stone Garden Grants, I believe, are because we are a border county and this is homeland security.
That is correct. It is part of homeland security and because we are bordered with Canada. And the biggest issue here, other than terrorism, is drug smuggling across the lakes.
Okay. Any questions for the sheriff on this?
Thank you. I assume that you've not had thermal imaging equipment in the past or access to it?
We have.
We, but not the spotlights. What we have and we've purchased in the past and we use on a regular basis are the thermal imaging binoculars or night vision, as you hear. Flips down, the guys wear it. We have two sets of those. They wear them and it's for, once again, everything from apprehension of criminals to search and rescue. We've used them much more for search and rescue than we have apprehension.
So with these spotlights, you'd have a monitor inside of the vehicle or something?
That is correct. These particular ones have a, you have the spotlight, which can use the 10,000 camp power or whatever that is. And then there's another switch that switches to infrared. And there's a small, I think it's a three-by-five or four-by-six screen that, monitor that goes on the visor of the patrol vehicles. So, and you can see, it's just like turning on the light switch, if you will, only it's much more accurate because in a case of, say, a missing child, you can get that heat signature where if you had just a spotlight and the child was down under, say, a tree or snowbank or whatever, with the spotlight, you wouldn't be able to see that. With the heat signature, it sees through walls and trees and snow and everything.
I'll make a motion to purchase the thermal imaging equipment.
Support that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Metelski and a second by Commissioner Redmond to accept the sheriff's recommendation and approve the purchase of four Noptec PSB 1000 Spotlight-Mounted Thermal Imagers with required hardware from Curif Night Vision out of Las Vegas, Nevada, at the bid price of $15,129 for the fiscal year 2011 State of Michigan Operation Stone Garden Grant. Authorize the chair to sign any forthcoming required documentation and also authorize any necessary budget adjustments. Any further discussions on discussion?
I have one question. Is there anything that would interfere the evasion of somebody's privacy with these heat sensors?
You know, I don't believe so. Commissioner, I mean, if they were used...
I thought I read something about it. That's why there was some discussion that, you know, if they shined it on somebody's house, they could see, you know...
What's going on?
Yeah, they, you know, I, without using them, I don't know how far out, especially through a house wall, that they could be used. But we will have policy and procedure as far as usage of them, just like we do the night vision we have right now. We have a policy and a procedure that limits the use of those, so.
He all just wants to borrow one.
You know, the, I have read, when I did the research on these, these have been used, like, in a house fire where, you know, before the fire department gets their type thing, where the law enforcement have actually pulled right up to the house and looking for people in the home and that they could capture a signature. Now, it's not very detailed. You know, it's not like a x-ray where you could see everything. It is more just a heat signature. It's just a blob. And you know that through the training with these, that that blob is a person. And so they've used them for, like, rescues and house fires and stuff. But like I said, it's not a, it's not a detailed thing. It's just, it shows as a red blob is what it shows.
I have a question. How far out does it go?
The advertisement on them, if it's clear, say if it was in a field, is like a thousand foot. So, yeah. It's, it's, it is the same technology that they use. They call it FLUR in helicopters and search and rescue helicopters like the Coast Guard has. It's called FLUR and it's a forward-looking infrared. And they, those things are much more expensive naturally and much more accurate and they can really get out there and see. And we use the FLUR technology in our search and rescue all the time when we call the Coast Guard over. So it's the same technology. It's just parred down, if you will, to a spotlight. So it's not as, it's not as detailed nor is it reach out as far. But that's, that's the technology.
Sheriff, would that be like the Border Patrol uses in Mexico, on the Mexican border?
Yeah, that is FLUR. That is same technology. And once again, you know, those, those devices are, you know, a million dollars or whatever. But those things can reach right out there and see. And once again, it's heat signatures. For instance, when we use, and maybe this will answer your question, Commissioner Gwah, when we have the Coast Guard come over for a search and rescue operation, when we're up there, because we always have to put a deputy in the, in the chopper with the Coast Guardsman because we know the area. But when the FLUR looks down, we've flown down on deer, we've flown down on coyotes because all you see is that red blob. And you can't really see in person until you get really, really close. So, so I don't, I don't believe it would be an issue with, you know, security in a home or anything like that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Purchase authorized.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's another good tool in our kit bag, that's for certain.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, the next item would be Kerry, and these are budget adjustments that are necessary at this time.
Budget adjustments would normally come in front of the board at this type of meeting. However, these came up right after the January business meeting and I worked on them and then filed them away and forgot to put them on the February budget adjustment sheet. So that's why they're coming before the board at this time. There is an issue in District Court where we came upon in the fall of 2013 that on-call time was not being paid at, recorded on the time sheets at time and a half. It was being recorded at straight time. And so we have inadvertently been underpaying a staff member in the District Court for the last three years. We did go through and analyze the financial impact of that and are requesting to pay those back funds out of case flow funds, which is a kind of little pot of money that the District Court has for 2011, 12, and 13. The second budget adjustment actually addresses what's going to happen in 2014 with that same situation. In 2014, we are asking to increase the on-call line by $1,000 and the corresponding fringe by 225 to be able to appropriately pay the overtime rate for any on-call hours worked over 40. Because that is a permanent change, that is a, we are also requiring an amendment to the salary and wage resolution. That's why there are two motions at the bottom of the sheet. But then the third budget adjustment that I'll get through, since you'll probably approve all the budget adjustments in just one motion, is the Circuit Court Clerk, Collections Clerk is retiring and the Circuit Clerk, Court has asked for a 56-hour training period, which is not a permanent change. It's merely a training period for this one employee and therefore we're asking to fund that change out of fund equity also. So there's a request to, or a recommendation to approve not only the budget adjustments, but then also the corresponding amendment number four to the salary and wage resolution for general employees as the on-call pay will be permanently increased due to the increase in rate.
And we can do this in one motion because there will be a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any questions for Kerry on this?
Make a motion to approve the interdepartment budget transfers provided in the attachment and a motion to adopt...
One at a time.
Okay.
Well, one.
Do it as one.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the interdepartment budget transfers provided in the attachment and to adopt amendment number four to the 2014 Salary and Wage Resolution Number 13-027, General Employees.
Okay. There's one?
One.
We have a motion by Commissioner Aller and a second by Commissioner Metelski to approve the interdepartment budget transfers that were provided in the attachment and also to adopt amendment number four to the Sheboygan County 2014 Salary and Wage Resolution 13-027, General Employees. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Gwah here?
Yes.
Commissioner Redmond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gwah?
Yes.
Commissioner Metelski?
Yes.
Commissioner Aller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silke. Six As, one absent. Motion passes. Resolution, the amendment number four to Resolution 13-027, adopted.
Then the next set of budget adjustments are actually raise revenue and expenditures. And this is for the replacement of copy machines. Since the beginning of the year, we have had actual failure of three copy machine units. I had a planned replacement of my copy machine and finance, which was budgeted. But when we looked at the entire inventory of copy machines, I went through and worked with the IT Department and also our support provider with Williams Office and have come up with a replacement plan for all of our copy machines. They'll now be budgeted on an annual basis to the tune of about $17,500 to replace the entire lot of copy machines every five years. Obviously, that can be tweaked from year to year. We won't spend when we don't need to, but this will be our plan of attack so that we can keep up on the replacement of large-dollar items like copy machines. So this budget adjustment is actually asking for the additional $12,500 that we're going to need for the 2014 year to come out of fund equity.
Questions for Kerry on this, in addition to the information provided? Pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion that we approve this expenditure.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Redmond and a second by Commissioner Gwah to approve the budget adjustments to raise revenues and expenditures for $12,500 in 2014 in the line items provided in the attachment. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Redmond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gwah?
Yes.
Commissioner Metelski?
Yes.
Commissioner Aller?
Yes.
Commissioner Silke?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gwah here?
Yes.
Six As, one absent. Motion passes. Adjustments approved. Thank you. Thank you, Kerry. Brings us down to board member comments. I do want to say, I'm talking to Commissioner Wallace yesterday, that his wife is in intensive care in the Metelski Hospital. She has double pneumonia and she has H1N1 and she's quarantined.
Who's that?
John Wallace's wife, Mary. She said she's pretty critical at the moment, pretty ill.
I have, I have, I have an issue. This is the time of year that we look at evaluating our county commissioner and our Board Appointments and Procedures Committee works with the clerk's office to put together the packet. I have the packets here that I'm going to hand out today. The packets inside of them are, this is the same evaluation format that we've used in the past. There is an explanation letter in here as far as instructions on what to do. Would like to have these back in my hands or in Kathy's hands by March 14th, which is a Friday.
I assume you mean the county administrator.
County administrator.
Yeah, you said county commissioner. I didn't know if you were going to evaluate me or not.
You should have mentioned it earlier.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll send the packets around. Again, there's explanation and as far as the timeline, March 14th is a critical timeline for, for all of us to have them turned in by that, by that day. So anyway, with that said...
Thank you.
You, here. They're in an envelope that is not sealed at the time. You can, when you're done with everything, put it in the envelope and please seal it when you do turn it in.
Any other board member comments? Commissioner Gwah here?
I'll take the occasion to mention the 100 Club again. I mentioned it about a year ago or so. It's a, an organization that exists to, well, let me read the mission statement of it. And I have some, we're obviously looking for new members all the time and to continue to increase the fund balance. We haven't had any need to dip into the, it's a good thing that we haven't had any need to dip into it. But the mission statement says, "To provide aid to Sheboygan County volunteer firefighters, police personnel, ambulance personnel, and first responders who are killed, injured, disabled, or sickened in the line of duty. The goal of the 100 Club is to provide financial support to the families of these people who protect our property, safety, and health and become unable to provide an income to their families because they are injured or killed while protecting our families." So, anyway, I have some membership forms if anybody would like to join. It's a worthwhile cause.
If anyone wishes to get a application from, or a form from Commissioner Gwah here after the meeting? And Commissioner Metelski was next?
There was, after we approved the raises for the elected officials, they were, there was an article written in the paper and I have been attacked by ladies wanting to know why, okay? The prosecutor makes $30,000 a year more than the treasurer and the county clerk. They just think that's inequity that everybody, they've been saying for years that women don't make as much money as men. And the, these ladies, they're really upset. I can't go out to eat. And somewhere...
It wasn't me.
And these ladies, and they're all, you know, like, more mature ladies that are questioning this. And so I just, I just wanted to let you know that this is a point of discussion among the ladies of the community is that why does the, and then another, and the guys have asked, why does the prosecutor make $20,000 more than the sheriff when the sheriff's job, sheriff has a lot more of a supervisory role than the, than the prosecutor? Also, I would like to, Kerry, I'd like to ask Kerry, with our, when we got our W2s, we got that little slip showing how much we cost the county. And you said that with your new software, you could, you were able to do that? I would like a list of all county officials and their cost to the county from, if that's possible.
Okay, when you say county officials, can you be specific?
I'm talking from the prosecutor right on down through the...
Any elected is what you're saying?
Elected officials.
Okay.
Elected officials.
Okay.
It's nobody's business really, but, but all elected officials. I think the folks, the folks would like to know how much, the cost to them, actually, they're paying the bill of their elected officials.
Okay.
Commissioner Aller?
Yeah, I don't know if now's the time or not for this, but a few days ago, I was in talking with Matt regarding the iPads. And we created a file on my iPad, which I think is probably on all of your iPads.
I know that it is because Matt tested mine, but how to go find it, I don't know.
To do a test, I was telling him that sometimes I have information, you know, that we get at meetings and you guys may have information from meetings that needs to get out to each of us. And so that was the reason he created this general info folder, which will allow us to swipe things into that folder. So I swiped something into your folder today and...
So it's your job to find your folder.
You get to find it, but all of you might have it. But I've got several other documents that I'm going to be swiping in. If you read them, great. If not, at least they're there. But I just...
Could you explain how we find this?
We're going to need Matt. I mean, it can be found, but I don't know where you're at on your, everybody might be at a different spot right now on their, on their iPad.
We don't have Wi-Fi either.
You don't have Wi-Fi? Mine sucks bad.
Yeah, well, yeah, but Matt had to hook us up in here. He hooked me up. It's just sitting in the face of the...
Where do you find folders?
But I'm different than you, I don't know. You go into your basic page, the front page that's got everything on it.
Okay.
It's like your, and then go up and hit your documents.
Or under Network, you can hit Board, Board@County?
Yeah, you need to go to...
Wait a second, you have to go to Settings first?
No, you need to get to Network. You know, like, pretend you're downloading your packet.
Okay, go to Safari.
Yeah, and then go to Network and then hit, then hit Board.
Wait a second, wait, you're way past me here.
Because everybody got...
What's your thing listed under?
It's called, it's a, it's a little blue file and it says in lowercase, General Info. That's the file that Matt created.
Okay, but it's under, I just...
If you hit, if you hit on the left side of your screen where it says Network or Board@County.net, and then you get all your little folders. You'll have the folders to the, to the right. And the top one should say Sheboygan County Master Plan. Does anybody see in that?
Mine, my iPad says that I'm not connected to the internet.
Mine's working. Mine's working.
So where do we go after?
I don't know, Bruce.
Well, wait a minute now. I just got to the page where it says, it's got the list of stuff that we've downloaded...
Okay, how about we do this, how about we do this after the meeting? We don't know how to find it. We just know that it's there.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I would like to ask, you say you swipe stuff into it.
Yeah.
Can you swipe stuff out of it?
Yeah.
We're going to need a little course from, a little help from Matt. But we'll do that after the meeting.
Okay.
If the Commissioner's order, can I make a comment?
Yeah, I've got one more thing, but you go ahead.
No, well, go ahead. Sorry.
It came to my attention that, we made the motion to send the letter to the gun group, but they're actually using property right now that belongs to us. And when we gave away the logos to the other units, we really do need to give them, or we should give them at the recommendation of the administrator, we should give them the website because they're using it. They're using it in all the, all the propaganda, or propaganda, all the information that they're putting out there. And actually, I've got two old articles...
Did you say give them the website or allow them to use the website?
Give it to them.
Give it to them?
Yes. Because we're not using it for that. They want to use it for Great Up North, I think. I think, here's, here's how this was developed. It was by, you know, a group that helped with the grant. And there were, like, it was Aloha Township, Tusker River, Mackinac City, Wolverine, MSU Extension, Nemco, Chambers, Terrace Bureaus. And then when they came to, it actually started at the CDEG, or Sheboygan Economic Development Group, and then it went to the Sheboygan Economic Development Corporation. And then they sent it to us to apply for this grant. And when the grant came through for this marketing money, we put it out for bids and one of those, like Stephanie explained, one of those people bid and got the bid, developed this product for us, which included logos and websites and that kind of thing. And at that time, and this was October 11th, I voiced concern with community development staff time being consumed and Mr. Schnell stated that the net financial impact to the county is $0. Mr. Schnell said they are relying on the partners for commitment. Mr. Atkins of Northern Lakes Creative Marketing said at the end of the project, we'll deliver a plan for the partners and it will be up to the partners and municipalities to move forward. And part of that was the recommendation that we hire this company, which we did not act on. And then I said that I wanted to make it clear that this is not a county project. And then we put, gave the bid to the low bidder, which was Northern Creative Marketing. And part of the contract states, "All physical materials and creative work developed and produced during the course of consultant work will be the property of Sheboygan County." So that website, Matt, we need to do that after the meeting. Right now, they're utilizing, actually, the Great Up North concept was what developed out of that. And that particular group is using this. They did have a, at one time, had used the website, gone into it, changed it, and put a form on it for donations that went into community foundations, which we stopped. And no one had a right to touch that. They developed a product for us, our, for us. They had no right to use it. They did and they are. We're not using it. We're not going to be part of that. I think that we should turn over. Is it just the website, Jeff?
Yeah, websites and logos. We've already turned over the websites to the local units, Aloha Township, Wolverine, and also Indian River. Each individually received their areas.
And our logo was our own.
Yeah, so the primary page is left. What my recommendation would be is, is transfer that to the Sheboygan Chamber and then they can work. The gun group, my understanding disformed, is a nonprofit. I don't know what their status is as far as forming boards or any of that. But we would transfer the website to Sheboygan Chamber and allow them to utilize it from that point. So we would no longer be involved with any of the...
Because this website was developed with a grant, is there any legal reason why we can't turn that over? No? Okay.
So the recommendation would be to transfer the Great Up North primary website to the Sheboygan Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
Feeling of the board?
Yeah, what the hell?
Yes.
Need a motion and support to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Commissioner Gwah?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Commissioner Metelski and a second by Commissioner Gwah to transfer the Great Up North... the Great Up North primary website to the Sheboygan Chamber of Commerce. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gwia?
Yes.
Commissioner Metelski?
Yes.
Commissioner Aller?
Yes.
Commissioner Salki?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauthier?
Yes.
And Commissioner Redmond?
Yes.
Six As, one absent. Motion passes. Transfer approved. And is there anything else that anyone wishes? Oh, Linda, sorry.
This is something that I kept trying to remember to tell Jeff. It's something that I saw on the internet, and it's regarding copy machines and the new copy, well, not new copy, but a lot of copy machines now have like a motherboard in it. And when we get rid of an old copy machine, I saw on this, this program where they were able to go in and pick up three machines, take that, that motherboard out, and download thousands and thousands and thousands of copies that were made on that copy machine with medical records, social security numbers, and all this stuff. So I think it might behoove us to, when we're getting, and what reminded me is she started about getting new copy machines, when we're getting rid of the old ones, if it has come from a court or even my office with passport information and different things, that there is a program you can buy that will clear that. But if they remove those.
I checked with Williams, and they do clear our motherboards.
Okay.
For us.
Can they verify that they're doing that for us?
I can ask for that in writing, yes.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah. Because that was, when I saw that, I thought, holy smokes.
It's the same, it's the same with cell phones, I believe, too. There's a lot of information, you know, and how to destroy your, even your hard drives on your computers so that people can't get them and access your information. Be really careful.
Should we do that ourselves rather than rely on somebody else to do it? Because how do we know that they're actually doing it?
That's what I, when I asked if we could get a verification that they did it.
Yeah, but they could say they did it.
Yeah, we, we would need to verify with them. The software would be specific to the units that they maintain. Because we, a lot of ours become refurbished units, so they have to be wiped clean.
They're kind of scary.
We also have refurbished units that we get here also. But the companies, whether it's Toshiba or Xerox, sell proprietary stuff to.
We're developing policies and procedures to deal with cybersecurity, all kinds of information security, you know, data, data banking, all of that. I think we need to, you know, to maybe check with our risk carrier and find out, because they develop, currently consistently developing changes in policies to refer to us. See what they would say as to having a consistent policy on how to deal with the removal and the destroying of public records on old machines.
Yeah, with that issue that Target had back around holiday time, I know that there's new legislation being talked about that will really put everything back on the individual who was collecting that data, on Target namely. And the fines are going to be significant when an entity does not put forth the steps and measures to protect.
When an entity doesn't put forth the steps.
Right.
And that's even, even as far as information hacking on our computer systems that we found for risk management. I know that the sheriff and I, and the administrator talked a while back about having Michigan Municipal Risk, our insurance carrier, risk carrier, coming in and evaluating our policies and where we stand for risk. Where are we, where are you with that, Dale?
Just talked to Bill Page again last week about that. And they've got two representatives coming up to do the Sheriff's Department here within the next 30 days, is what he told me.
Yeah. And at that time, we hopefully could have them look at some of our other policies and see where we stand. Because it's also good for our insurance rates if we are compliant in a lot of these areas.
And a lot of our policies of the Sheriff's Department are mirror images of what owns policies also. I'm sure those two representatives could give us advice. And anything, I mean, for instance, the question about the infrared technology being used, you know, I called MMRMA, and they've got a lot of policy. So I plagiarize what they've.
And that's, it's sensitivity to infringing on people's rights, or they give, they make us caretakers of their information, and we need to protect it. Good point. Good point, Linda, thank you.
It really bothered me when I saw it. I mean, they had, had three machines, and they had gotten medical records, they had gotten criminal records, sexual abuse records, thousands. And they were sending 300 machines overseas. It was a company that had purchased all these used machines, and they were, they gone in and bought three of them, this group, and downloaded this program from the internet that was really easy to hack into it, and had all these copies.
I did, that was like a 60 Minutes program or something. I saw the same thing. It was shortly thereafter that we replaced our copier up there to ask Williams when they came up if they swiped those clean, and they told me they did.
Okay, anything else for the board?
Motion adjourn to the call of the chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Redmond and a second by Commissioner Metelski to adjourn this meeting to the call of the chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming, and most everyone's left.
Sure.
Thank you, Stephanie, just thanks.
You want to be part of the folders from that?
Wait, does that say landlines?
Yeah, you mean the ones that recycle.
Okay.
You mean the annual report?
Found the file, it said general info.
glossy thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So they have.
Annual report.
I probably still got one. I didn't make it.
I got somebody that's interested in, in housing care and house.
So I'm gonna.
Probably get that information from Bert.
I got a few other things that I got.
Mike Bert.